We pray in a special way tonight for our police officers as we observe Police Week. We ask you to protect them and keep them safe from danger as they protect our community from those who would do us harm. We ask all these things as one people, united in purpose to serve the common good of all. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to remind everybody to silence their electronic devices. Council members have been to double check. I know that we're going to be the worst offenders one of these nights. First item on the agenda is a certificate of recognition for the Police Officer of the Year. Jonah Daniel is a 2020 Police Officer of the Year. Jonah, would you like to step up? I'm sorry, Officer Daniel, please step up. It's good to see you.
Good to see you.
Very proud of you. This is a great accomplishment for being so young in your career. It's amazing, so.
Yes, sir.
So ladies and gentlemen, it's an honor for me to read this certificate of recognition for Officer Jonah Daniel, the 2020 Thomas L. Lewis Police Officer of the Year. Officer Jonah Daniel is a police officer who's truly dedicated to the city of Temple Terrace and the citizens he serves. Jonah has continually proven himself to be an extremely proactive and highly motivated officer whose performance routinely leads the squads he's been assigned to. In 2020, Officer Daniel conducted 414 traffic stops, issued 120 citations, and 362 written warnings. He also responded to over 1,100 calls for service, authoring 112 reports and making 23 arrests. The investigations conducted by Jonah are always extremely thorough and his reports very detailed and well-written. Jonah goes above and beyond by authoring and executing special deployment plans, targeting various areas throughout the city in an effort to keep our residents safe. Through his efforts in the areas of enforcement and intelligence gathering, various community concerns have been dealt with swiftly and dangerous criminals have been apprehended. Officer Daniel has a servant's heart, treats everyone he encounters with dignity and respect, and continually strives to be of assistance to everyone he encounters. For these reasons and his uncompromising dedication to the city of Temple Terrace, its citizens, and his many coworkers, who we have several of here tonight, Officer Jonah Daniel has been awarded the 2020 Thomas L. Lewis Police Officer of the Year Award. Congratulations, Jonah. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes. So I would first of all like to thank City Council, Mr. City Manager, and most of all, my administration and my squad. Wouldn't be possible without them. The best people to come to work with, make me want to go to work every single day. It's not a job, and I enjoy every single moment of being here. It's the best city I could ever work for, and I appreciate all of you guys' support and appreciation. It means the world to us, okay? Thank you very much.
Very good, Jonah. We're very happy to have you aboard, and having been a law enforcement officer for a long time, I can tell you that to win this honor is quite an ordeal, but to win it so early in your career is really remarkable. That's very unusual to win this so early in your career. So, and I happen to know Jonah, he's at least second generation law enforcement, not second, right? I don't know if it's right, second generation law enforcement, so I've known Jonah since he was about yay big. So it's a great honor to give you this award. Xavier Miranda. Welcome.
Thank you.
Good to see you. This is again another high honor. This is the best time of the year to be mayor. Firefighter Xavier Miranda has truly dedicated to the city of Temple Terrace and the citizens he serves. He began his career with the City of Temple Terrace Fire Department in June of 2016. Firefighter Miranda exemplifies our agent's mission and core values, and his principles align with those of the Temple Terrace Fire Department. His compassion, professionalism, and respect for our citizens and visitors is evident both on duty and off. As described by his coworkers, firefighter Miranda is a hardworking and honest employee who exhibits great integrity and passion for his career. Firefighter Miranda arrives to work each day with a positive attitude, creating a positive work environment for everybody. Simply put, firefighter Miranda is the future of our fire department. For those reasons and his uncompromising dedication to the city of Temple Terrace, its citizens, and his many coworkers, firefighter Xavier Miranda has been awarded the City of Temple Terrace Fire Department's Firefighter of the Year for 2020. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, when I found out that I was Firefighter of the Year, I was just really touched and humbled by being recognized by my peers and coworkers, and I just want to share this award with my wife and family who's here, who supported me, my parents who raised me, chief and admin who took a chance on me, and my B-shift brothers back at home who just molded me into the guy I was, and of course, this wonderful city who's just done so much for me. I love working here. It's just a great job, and I wouldn't trade it for anything else. I'm here in for the long haul, got all 20, 25 years here. I'm just excited, and I'm really, really honored and humbled to have gotten this award. It's crazy. Thank you.
We are thrilled to have you here, and we hope you stick around, and I should mention to both Jonah and you that I get the honor of presenting this award, but it's on behalf of the entire City Council. All of our names are on here, not just mine, and your chief and city manager, so we're all very proud of your service.
Appreciate it.
If we could have our clerk staff approach the podium.
Thank you.
You have to bring your keyboard with you. Can you do this from here? So whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants and is a time-honored and vital part of local government that exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas the professional municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the professional municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, county, and international professional organizations. Now therefore, I, Andrew Ross, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, do hereby proclaim May 2nd through 8th, 2021 to be 52nd Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week. Very good. Congratulations. So I asked Cheryl to say a short speech, but she declined, and so I'll do it on her behalf because neither she nor Kristen wanted to speak, and we know this up here, but I want to share this with members of the public, and that is that the clerk's job is one of those jobs, when everything is going right, everybody kind of takes it for granted, right? Because everything's going right. It's only when something happens that goes wrong that you realize how important the clerk's office is, and that doesn't happen here. We're very fortunate, but when a legal notice doesn't get posted or mailed out, it has large consequences. Their job is much more complex than most people realize, and when I came on the City Council and started to understand more fully what they did and all the things they're responsible for, it's a very complicated job between public records, public notices, legal letters that have to be sent, mailings, so many days for one thing, so many days for something else, and all the boards and committees. So these crew were missing a couple. Jen Hodges is unable to be with us tonight, and we have Susie, I don't remember Susie's last name, but so there's a couple of them, but these four ladies do amazing work for the city day in and day out, all the code enforcement, the police, there's just a tremendous amount of stuff that they do. And then for me personally, they do a lot also drafting letters and responding to things. So you have my personal appreciation, and I'm sure my share, the sentiments of the entire council, so thank you.
Thank you so much. Wait, there's more.
What's that?
But wait, there's more.
I know, one more, and then we have to be mean to somebody to offset this. Next item of business is recognition of 2021 National Police Week. Chief, would you like to approach? Welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Whereas the Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 15th as Police Officers Memorial Day and the week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week, and whereas 360 police officers in the United States lost their lives in the line of duty last year, 232 of which were lost as a direct result of the duty-related contraction of COVID-19. Preliminary 2021 reports as of April 16th indicate that 97 police officers throughout the country have already lost their lives in the line of duty this year. Whereas Temple Terrace police officers play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Temple Terrace, Temple Terrace police officers unwaveringly serve all people, safeguarding lives and property, protecting our community against violence and disorder, the innocent against deception, and the weak against oppression and intimidation. And whereas every time an officer falls, our communities lose so much more than a public servant. We lose a friend, a family member, a loved one, but most of all, we lose heroes who are willing to sacrifice everything to keep us safe. Now therefore, I, Andrew Ross, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, do hereby proclaim the week of May 9th through 15th, 2021, as National Police Week. Welcome, Chief. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity. It's a very humble time of year for us, very solemn time of year for us. The mayor during a promotional ceremony said some words, and I know I have officers here that weren't present for that, but those words resonate still in my memory, and it's important for everyone to remember what your officers do each and every day. Not everything makes the headlines, not everything hopefully should. If we're out doing everything that we're doing, we should prevent a lot of the things, and I think here in Temple Terrace, we certainly enjoy the relationship that we have with our community, the relationship that we have with our council, the leadership of our city manager, but the facts are the facts. Statistically, deaths are up again this year. Our officers, each and every day, without question or compromise, respond to every call for everyone without hesitation, without a thought of what that danger might be, and we go. And we go because it's a calling. It's not a job. Jonah said it very well. It's not a job. It's a calling. We rely on the support of our community to be as effective as we are. We are blessed because of this community. I can think of no place other, even though I didn't start my career here, I'm certainly happy that I'm finishing it here because it's no place I would rather serve, and I look for that in every officer that I hire. I look for the heart that allows a two-year, not quite two-year, officer to claim one of the most coveted awards that this department has to give, because it's the servant's heart. It's the willingness to bond with other officers and to go out and to do the duty of a police officer. In these times especially, more than ever in my entire 36 years as an officer, has it been, in my opinion, more difficult to conjure up that will, to continue to motivate and to hold each other up, to do the job that we're called to do. So next week, we will remember as a nation the sacrifices of those officers who have fallen in the line of duty, not because they wanted to die during their duty, but because, as the mayor said, they were willing to. We all know the risks. I am, I said humbled. I am humbled to stand before you to represent what I consider to be a truly phenomenal group of men and women that together are the Temple Terrace Police Department. They are here, they are committed to service, and I pray that there will never be a time in our city or our nation where a call would come in through dispatch and officers of some people have said would ponder whether or not it's time to respond, whether or not we'll just take this one off. That should never happen. God forbid it ever happens. So thank you for this. I would like to share too, there's a virtual candlelight vigil next week on May the 13th at 8:00 PM. The, if you have ever been to Washington and seen the actual memorial, it's very moving. I don't know what this is going to be. There will also be an in-person memorial held in October, but next week is Police Week, so I wanted to share this with you. It's a HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash N L E O M F dot org forward slash memorial. If you're interested, it would be very, very moving, I can assure you, to log on and see what they have in store for 2021. But again, thank you for the recognition, Mayor, Council, and most importantly, I want to thank all my officers for the job that they do each and every day keeping the citizens of Temple Terrace safe. Thank you.
Put the gang up here. Come on.
Little bit more over there.
Okay. See if I can, I don't want to have my head sticking out here. Come over here by me. I'll come over here.
That actually worked out well.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Jonah.
Thank you so much. Oh, the china closet, what can I say?
Okay. Next item of business is an appointment to the Riverwatch Task Force for an alternate member. There's one vacancy on the Riverwatch Task Force for an alternate member for a term extending from tonight, May 4th, until May 4th of 2024. We have one application from Mead Lewis. Welcome, Mr. Lewis. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Welcome.
All right, so I've been here before. I think I've lost some hair since I last presented. It's just how it rolls, but just to reiterate, I'm the founder and CEO of a tech startup where we use artificial intelligence to predict oil and gas pipeline leaks before they happen. I consider myself a closet tree hugger in a sense where I believe that we can combat the worst problems of humanity, the risks and the dangers that we pose to Mother Nature through efforts and mitigation techniques such as technology. And in trying to join the Riverwatch, I'd love to see some of that technology used to try to benefit this amazing city that I'm actually a new resident of. Moved here last month, and as I complained about last month when I applied for the Riverwatch, I'm sick of seeing trash, all right? Because once again, if it's blowing around in the streets, if it's blowing around in our yards, then it's going into the river, and what does that do downstream? Because everything goes downstream. So love to get this position, love to help out this community, and love to serve this wonderful city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Is there a motion to approve the appointment of Mr. Lewis as an alternate member of the Riverwatch Task Force?
Move to a point. Second.
Motion in a second by Councilmember Chambers. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no nays. Congratulations, Mr. Lewis, and thank you for your volunteerism. Next item is approval of the April 20th City Council meeting minutes. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes? If they are acceptable, entertain a motion.
I move to approve the reading of the minutes.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Councilmember Schistler, is there any discussion or correction to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the minutes are approved. Next item is persons wishing to be heard on items not listed on the agenda or items on the consent agenda. Council agreed to a 30-minute time limit for all public comment, which I don't think we have enough people here to exceed that anyway. Three-minute time limit will be imposed on all comments from the public. We do ask that speakers speak from the podium and give their city of residence prior to their comments. During public comment on items not on the agenda, we do like to reassure all of our citizens that these items are taken seriously and followed up on by staff. So I have no requests to speak at this time. Are there any members of the public who wish to address the council? Going once, going twice. Okay. Next item is lien reduction petition for property located at 12912 North 53rd Street. Code Board Chair David Pogorlitch will explain. Welcome, Mr. Pogorlitch.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight I do have two recommendations for you, the first being on North 53rd Street. However, before I begin, if you indulge me just slightly, I just want to make a couple of comments. First of all, tonight, surprise, surprise, I came slightly unprepared. I had everything with me except for the recommendation, and our crack team of the city clerks was able to get me the recommendation in between agenda items. So another reason why we love them. Secondly, I think, you know, you mentioned that the award for the police and all came from council, but I assure you that the citizens of Temple Terrace share that love for our police and our fire. They, we are very fortunate to have them as here in our city. They can get anywhere in the city in two minutes or less, which is awesome, and I know I say, speak for every citizen to say that we just, we just love them and are very happy that they're around. So moving on, so the first one is for 12912 North 52nd, 53rd Street. This particular property was out of compliance starting in November of 2020. It was given an extension until December of 2020 and finally came into compliance January 19th of 2021. Although costs for the city are estimated at $450, and the original lien amount was $1,000, the Code Board unanimously voted to recommend a reduction to $400 contingent upon payment within 30 days. May I stand for questions?
Is the property owner or representative in attendance to speak on this? Anybody here would like to speak on it? Is there any public comment on this? Okay, councilmember questions? I'd start off with a question for you, Mr. Pogorlitch. We normally put great stock in the recommendations of the Code Board, as well we should, but I have a question about why the recommendation is below city costs.
I can't give you a direct answer because I don't know myself. There was deliberation, there was some mention of issues related to COVID, not anybody actually getting sick, but everything being delayed as a result of COVID-related issues, and a motion was made for $400 rather than the cost of $450. It was seconded, and there was no further discussion, and it passed unanimously.
Okay, because I looked at the minutes of the meeting and I didn't see any justification.
I will say that I certainly had the same question, but it's not my job as Director of the Code Board to try to bend their vote, but it is something that I plan on discussing. We have a workshop coming up before our May meeting, and of course, every single one of you are invited if you so choose, and that is one of the items that I will be discussing with them.
Thank you. Mr. Schistler?
I just have a general question, not particularly with this case, but how many lien cases actually get collected upon?
Pretty close to all of them. I mean, I don't know the exact statistic. I think we could get that for you, but I can tell you that I know, Justin, I've been on and off the Director of Code Enforcement for 12 years, and I can only remember one that we didn't collect.
Okay, well, the only thing, the only reason I asked that question is that all the ones in the past that I can think of have been large, large numbers where relief was, you know, really.
Even the one that you're thinking of, the Holland case, we did finally collect.
No, I wasn't, I wasn't trying to, it wasn't a gotcha question, it was just, I just thought that the amount of it coming back for a lien reduction was a little curious. I'd never seen one this low before on the lien reduction, and maybe there were.
You mean the original lien versus the reduction?
Yeah, well, just the, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, as I recall-
voted to recommend a reduction to $400 contingent upon payment within 30 days. May I stand for questions?
Is the property owner or representative in attendance to speak on this? Anybody here would like to speak on it? Is there any public comment on this? Okay, councilmember questions? I'd start off with a question for you, Mr. Pogorilich. We normally put great stock in the recommendations of the Code Board, as well we should. But I have a question about why the recommendation is below city costs.
I can't give you a direct answer because I don't know myself. There was deliberation. There was some mention of issues related to COVID, not anybody actually getting sick, but everything being delayed as a result of COVID-related issues. And a motion was made for $400 rather than the cost of 450. It was it was seconded, and there was no further discussion, and it passed unanimously.
Okay. Because I looked at the minutes of the meeting, and I didn't see any justification.
I will say that I certainly had the same question, but it's not my job as as Director of the Code Board to try to bend their their vote. But it is something that I plan on discussing. We have a workshop coming up before our May meeting, and of course, every single one of you are invited if you so choose. And that is one of the items that I will be discussing with them.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Schisler?
I just have a general question, not particularly with this case. But how many lien cases actually get collected upon?
Pretty close to all of them. I mean, I can't I mean, I don't know the exact statistic. I think we could get that for you. But I can tell you that I know, Justin, I've been on and off the Director of Code Enforcement for 12 years.
Okay.
And I can only remember one that we didn't collect.
Okay. Well, the only thing I did was I asked that question is that all the ones in the past that I can think of have been large, large numbers where relief was, you know, really.
Even the even the one that you're thinking of, that the Holland case, we did finally collect.
Well, no, I wasn't I wasn't trying to. It wasn't a gotcha question. It was just I just thought that the the amount of it coming back for a lien reduction was a little curious. We I'd never seen one this low before on the lien reduction. Maybe there were.
You mean the original lien versus the reduction?
Yeah, well, just the yeah, exactly.
Yeah, as I recall, there is no guidelines. If it's, you know, 10,000 or up, you can only come back. I mean, we anybody can request a lien reduction. And, you know, I agree. You know, it was it was only $1,000. It got, you know, it was recommended at 450, and the Code Board decided 400 was the number. You know, I think a lot of factors are in play here. We have a lot of people in our city and other cities that are out of work.
Yeah.
You know, that's that's starting to turn around now, thank goodness, if people want to go back to work. But I think that had a lot to do with it, you know, a lot of COVID-related issues. Most of the lien reductions that we saw we have seen in the last three or four months have something to do with COVID, not necessarily that the person that responded got COVID. But things are slow and things are delayed because of furloughs and people not coming back to work and unemployment and everything else. So so COVID is a factor, and that's probably why you're seeing some of these lien reductions coming back with liens that you would not normally expect to be requested to be reduced.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Other questions, councilmembers?
Hmm.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Pogorilich. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the lien reduction for 12912 North 53rd Street from $1,000 to $400. If not paid by May 4th, 2021, it will revert to the $1,000.
The motion is there a second?
Your date of May 4th?
May 4th.
30 days from May 4th.
That's what it says. Sorry, I was looking here. Says, yeah, so what is that date? What would that be? June 4th? How many days?
Just say 30 days.
30 days. Okay. Sorry. I was just reading it off.
Can you?
I sure can.
Make sure we have that straight. 30 days from tonight.
That the if not paid by 30 days from tonight, it would revert to $1,000.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion on the motion? I have a comment to make. I we're only talking about $50 here, but it's a bigger issue than the $50. And let me just go on record saying why. And I'm not going to quibble over $50, but I'm not going to support this over the $50. And I'll take but let me it's not that I'm heartless and I just want the city to get $50. We only rarely, in my experience on the Code Board, because I've been on it a long time too, in and out of it also, on a few occasions, we have gone below city costs. In fact, on a couple of occasions, two that I can recall, we went to zero. We erased the whole thing. But in every case that we went below city costs, there were clearly unusual and exigent circumstances. We didn't do it just because whatever. I read the minutes of this. I wasn't at the hearing, but I did read the minutes. And I don't see anything COVID-related that caused this case. I didn't see where a tree fell on their house and they couldn't get plywood or it wasn't. I don't see anything in here COVID-related. I didn't see anything in here where the petitioner claimed a particular hardship of illness, family distress, anything like that. I respect the Code Board a great deal, and I think we should normally adhere to their recommendations. But I think we also need the Code Board to understand that unless there's some unusual or exigent circumstance, we need to recoup our actual hard costs. These are actual costs to the taxpayer, this $450. It's I don't think in principle it's fair for the taxpayers to have to eat $50. Even it's a small amount. I get it. But but I just think that those cases where we go below city costs should be based on unusual or exigent circumstances that are out of the ordinary. So that's that's my opinion. So.
And if I if I may add one thing, in this particular case, I know I mentioned it before, but I would like to remind you that the original out of compliance date was November 12th. It was given an extension until December 9th, and it was not brought into compliance until January.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes. And as the liaison, I was at that meeting. And if you ask me, what's the one reason, just like with Mr. Pogorilich, I can't give it to you. I do know there was a very good deliberation, a lot of discussion, and that's the number they came up with. Whatever we do tonight, I'm going to support it because it's what the Code Board wanted. And I don't see any reason to change that. But I do think it's your work session that would be a good topic to bring up, especially about our costs.
I have a question.
Councilmember Abel.
I'm curious about how the the code enforcement and city costs are calculated. What is that based on? Like, the clerk's cost was $100. How are these things calculated and billed?
It's a combination of number of code officer trips, time spent by the city clerk and her assistants, and and there's actually kind of a two-way test. There's the 10% rule, and then there's cost, and whichever one is is lowered usually is what we go with. But they do keep track of the number of visits they make to the property. They do keep track of the number of phone calls they make to the property owner. They do keep track of the amount of time that they have to go out searching the internet for property owners, et cetera. So it's not an exact science by any stretch of the imagination, but I would say it's probably 75, 80% accurate.
Okay, thank you. And a follow-up question is, are there any guidelines that code enforcement officers follow about how often they follow up and visit sites that are out of compliance?
Again, each case is unique. If it's a if it's a repeat offender, for instance, they may go out three days later. Typically, they will put when they put a door hanger on, they will give them a date. They will go there either the date of the date of compliance or the day after the date of compliance, depending on their schedule. So it's not like it's a surprise visit. All the respondents are told when they have to bring the property into compliance, and every property respondent is told when the next visit will be. So we're not surprising them. It's all above board, all transparent. And typically, just so you understand the timeline, by the time it gets to the Code Board, at least two months have gone by. Typically, usually three. So even if they don't do exactly what the Code Board says to do when they say to do it, they still have a little bit of fluff in there, a little bit of slack to come. So, you know, if they were out of compliance, and the night they came to us, it's in compliance, we usually give them some some levity on the fine and some reduction. So it's it's a it's a long process, and the ones that do ultimately come in front of us, there's either a death in the family or COVID or or something, or they're just not doing it. They're just they're either thumbing their nose at us, or they're not communicating with the Code Board or the code officers. I can't you can't communicate with the Code Board, but not communicating with the code officers, or they just refuse to do it. They just don't think they have to. They think it's somebody else's problem. And those are the ones that that come in front of us.
Thank you.
Other discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Two nays. Schisler, Ross. All right, very good. The next item on the agenda is a lien reduction petition for the property located at 315 Brentwood Drive. Chairman Pogorilich happens to be poised to explain.
Thank you. Thank you again, Mayor and Council. David Pogorilich, Code Enforcement Chair. This is again, the address is 315 Brentwood Drive. The date of out of compliance was December 9, 2020. It was brought into compliance on 12/31/2020. The costs in this particular case were $383. The original lien was $525. And the the Code Board unanimously voted to reduce the 525 down to $200 at the at our last meeting.
Is the property owner or representative here to comment on this petition? I don't see them here. Is there any public comment on this item? Don't see any of that either. Councilmembers, any questions for Chairman Pogorilich? I have the same question with the is the answer any different in this case?
The answer is no different. Again, it was the motion was made. There was very little deliberation. In this particular case, the I think if you look at the minutes, there was some mention. Hang on, let me find it. ignorance of permitting, process, travel outside the state, sickness and difficulties surrounding the ongoing pandemic were the reasons the respondent gave for not bringing it into compliance. However, again, I cannot point to a specific reason why the Code Board unanimously voted to reduce it below cost.
Okay. Well, I have the same concerns. I'm concerned that we're starting something here that is going we're later going to regret. Like I said in the last case, the times before when we've gone below city cost, there's always been a specific tangible reason, and other people in similar circumstances would have gotten the same thing. In these cases, every lien reduction petition is going to be in a similar case. There's no exigent circumstances here.
And, you know, I will say that, again, one of the things I plan on mentioning at the workshop is our code enforcement officers, nobody knows the case better than they do. In every single instance, they will know the case better than we do. Our job is to present our findings based on the facts presented to us that evening. In many of these cases, they have lived it for for months at a time. And again, if I don't I certainly understand where you're coming from when they make a recommendation. It would be my hope that our the rest of our board would would accept the recommendation of the Code Board of the code officer.
Right.
Except for except for extenuating circumstances.
Again, and the other thing is, is I don't see in the minutes on either of these cases where there was any, like, discussion where somebody voiced a reason for going below city cost, where there was somebody had a good reason for wanting to do that. I didn't see anything in the minutes.
You didn't see it because it didn't happen. The motion was made. It was seconded. There was little to no deliberation, and a motion passed.
Okay. Councilmember, other questions? A councilmember?
It passed unanimously, both of them.
Yes.
So
Yes.
There was little discussion, unanimous vote. I mean, either there was discussion that wasn't noted here, or you're saying there was no discussion. That is a highly unusual. My concern is that if if go ahead, please.
If you look at on your agenda too, it's included there, you have to consider the fact that they have in front of them at the time the request from the property owner. So it isn't always something that's said. Sometimes the property owners don't even show up. But there is the application for the lien reduction. And in this particular case, I mean, there was something written in the last one. In this one, there's a long email from
Yeah, I read what I read, well, yeah.
As to why this ran for these people. And apparently, they're claiming that they were at the mercy of the person who was supposed to be doing their architectural drawings. And they were the ones claiming to be shorthanded due to COVID. And they just could not get the documents that they needed in order to pull their permit to meet the deadline that was originally given. So I'm assuming that since these same documents would be in front of the Code Enforcement Board, that each of those members would have considered that at the time that they made their vote.
Thank you. I read that as well. And I felt the same way. But I since she said there was no discussion, but she points out, no discussion could mean that you read it and everybody said, oh, okay, we we get it.
I mean, you know how it works, the same way it works here. It's after the after the second, there's a period allowed for board discussion. There was no discussion. It was just voted on.
Because they had read the petition.
I did.
Yeah, well, and we have too.
Yeah, I don't I can't speak for each one of the members and tell you exactly what they read or when they read it. But I did.
Mm-hmm. Right.
Other questions, councilmembers?
Comment, I'm ready.
Well, questions at this point?
Understood.
Questions? If there are no more questions, thank you, Mr. Pogorilich. Okay, is there a motion?
I move to approve a lien reduction petition for 315 Brentwood Drive. That's contingent upon the fine being paid within 30 days of the council's decision, or it will revert back to the original $525.
You have to say what you want to reduce it to.
Oh, to $200.
I'll second that.
Sufficient? You get the motion sufficiently? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Schisler?
Yeah. Again, to reiterate what what Mayor Ross had said, going below the city costs is, to me, an issue. And number two, again, I have a feeling that this is going potentially open a floodgate for every petition to come through there and not get paid. And everything's going to be requested to be reduced, no matter how big or how small. And I think in and if there's some way to put a threshold on that, because it's, you know, we it's just going to it's just going to cause an awful lot of problems going forward, I believe. It's just going to it's going to set a precedent. I don't support the the motion.
Councilmember Chambers?
Okay, again, I'm going to support this for the same reason I did last time. The Code Board heard it. They heard a lot of testimony. They had background information. That was their unanimous vote. I also understand all the concerns about the floodgate. If the floodgate opens again and in the workshop, hopefully, the Code Board understands the what we are feeling as city council and the concerns we feel, and that gets passed on. So they have a better idea of how, you know, guidance in the future. They're just going on the information they got that night and the training they've had.
Correct.
Well, I think they would understand it better if we recruit city costs and changed their didn't accept their recommendation. But council, okay. So one final comment, I think I've said it all, but I'm very concerned about what we're doing here, because these numbers are small. 50 bucks, $183. These are small numbers. But I've been doing this for a long time. Right? Some of these cases are not small. They come in with $180,000, and they want to reduce it to 800. And the city's into it for $30,000 in hard costs. And now they can say, well, you did it for these guys. Right? Before tonight, we had an answer to that. Before tonight, we could say the only time we've gone below city costs were this case and this case, and these are why. We had very specific tangible reasons why we went below city costs. Now, we got nothing. We're just doing it. And so stand by, because this is what I'm afraid we're going to start to see now. And now we've done two cases tonight where we've done this. We've broken with our tradition. We've broken our precedent. So I don't know where this will get us. Hopefully, it won't be bad.
Let me say
Yes, place, Mayor.
I think if we've we've all said that there there was something here that we, you know, if you read through their application, there were some mitigating circumstances that were unusual. They're not wildly unusual, because the world's been in this situation now for 18 months. But we can also say, yes, we approved these tonight. But going forward, we, you know, we expect that the city's costs are. I mean, I do believe we can say that, that we can set ourselves in a situation to tell the Code Board. You know, when you make the petition as to why, this is the threshold. The city's costs must be covered, and then they can't go below that. Because no one gets a code violation without deserving some liability. And so therefore, I mean, unless, like you said, unless it's a completely out of their hands situation and whatever. But I think we're doing two things. We're approving what we've said to the Code Board we would do, which we will let them mitigate these situations, let them take care of them, listen to them, make a decision. And then we, nine times out of 10, support them. We've had very few that we've returned back to them. And if Mr. Pogorilich is saying that they're going to have a workshop specifically addressing this problem, then that should take care of this problem going forward. Did I misunderstand?
No. So we're admitting there's a problem.
Well, we know there's a problem, but we've we've also said.
We're admitting there's a problem, and we're open they're going to fix.
Just to clarify, the workshop, we have a number of new members. The workshop is to address a number of different procedures and issues to bring everybody up to speed. It's not just to address this particular item items tonight. Okay, it's 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 there's there's been some confusion because of the newness of the board. I've been there a long time, so.
But you have a unanimous decision here.
Yes.
Obviously, old timers and new new beginning members all agreed, based on what they read, that this was
Well, they all agreed.
And the code and compliance officer asked for that amount.
Okay, we we need to get back on track there. We have a motion on the floor, and is there further discussion on the motion? The motion is to reduce the lien to 200 is there further discussion on the motion? The motion is to reduce the lien to $200 payable within 30 days. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Two nays. Well, city manager.
Mr. Mayor, let me, let me clarify something with council. You know, you get a recommendation from the Code Board, it doesn't mean this council has to agree with that. Although they've come with a unanimous vote, you don't necessarily have to agree with that. You can certainly set whatever parameters you want when that case comes before you. So just to make you aware that you're not obligated because you got a unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Okay. So next item on the agenda is a resolution approving an agreement with Landfall Strategies LLC for disaster debris monitoring service. Public Works Director Ray LeBlanc will explain. Welcome, Mr. LeBlanc.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Since 2000, the city has retained the services of a disaster recovery service vendor on an as-needed basis. Through Resolution 12-20, the city currently has an agreement with Southern Disaster Recovery LLC. However, it would be in the best interest of the city to have agreements with more than one vendor for debris removal services during emergencies in order to provide a second layer of protection should a event impact the city. The following items should be considered in regard to entering into an agreement with Landfall Strategies LLC. This is a no-cost, zero-cost agreement, which protects the city should there be a natural disaster in the coming years. This agreement in no way interferes with any other agreements for similar services, nor does it require the city to use Landfall Strategies. The FEMA requirements met within this recently procured agreement are fully up to date and will place the city in a position of full compliance, thus decreasing scrutiny and increasing the likelihood of a fully reimbursable program. The pricing contained within this new agreement is up to date and will place the city in a positive position to garner sufficient contractor services following a storm. Attached to the agenda item is the City of Sanibel Agreement. The term of the Sanibel Agreement is June 4, 2019, through December 31, 2022. If council approves this piggyback agreement with Landfall Strategies, it will be for approximately 18 months and will terminate on December 31, 2022.
Thank you, Mr. LeBlanc. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, council member, questions for Mr. LeBlanc? Mr. Sisler?
Yes, sir. What are the mechanics of this? In other words, I don't remember, you said this has been, an agreement like this has been in place since 2000. I don't remember utilizing this in Irma.
Well, with, we've, we've had agreements since 2000.
Yeah.
Okay. In Irma, we, we had an agreement. However, the rest of the world was impacted.
Okay, so it was just.
So, under, FEMA's since changed the rules to explain, under that agreement, the, the contractors that we had, they were able to not come to us.
Okay.
Because of the rate tables, but all that's been compressed and put. So these agreements that we have now, they're required to show up, even if other places are impacted. So we have multiple layers now, not just one.
So this will increase our reimbursability, if that's a word, through FEMA?
Yes, because they're, they're, they have different rate tables, and they're requiring everything to be counted in different ways. So they want up-to-date rate tables.
So then what are the mechanics of them jumping in front of, I don't know, whoever else they sign up with? What's gonna guarantee them to, to come here?
Well, they're, they're, they're under, all these companies since Irma, or whatever, they're under a tighter scrutiny where their rate tables are pretty much all the same. Okay, they can't, they were all over the board when, when they had that storm.
Sure, sure.
So their, their requirements, you know, they, they can't, they went to, say, Louisiana or wherever, and they got paid triple.
Okay.
And they got reimbursed. So if they want to go, if they're here and they want to go to Louisiana, they're gonna get paid the same. So the, the rate tables, the way they're compressed and, and more lined up, they, they're gonna stay here instead of going over there because they're not gonna get reimbursed, even if they pay more.
Are they big enough to handle?
Yeah.
Wherever they're gonna have to go, or?
Yeah, yeah. Southern, Southern Disaster is actually one of the best companies, I think, that we've had onboard. We haven't used them yet. Hopefully, we don't need them. But they're based out of Naples. They're two hours away from us with project managers and all that stuff. And this is just for debris monitoring, which is just as important as the actual cleanup. They've gotten really, really picky with FEMA with the reimbursement. We, we've been fortunate with reimbursement.
I understand the process of, as far as that goes, but I would just hope that we look into how many contracts, if that's even possible, how many contracts do they have? Because if we get hit, everybody all up and down the, through the coast is gonna get hit. And if they've got contracts with five cities down, we're not gonna get the service that we need in the future. That'd be my only concern.
Right. Well, the, the company that we had the agreement with in Irma that didn't show up, we don't have anymore.
Who was it? Do you remember?
DRC. For the reason you decided.
Okay.
We don't, we don't have anymore. This is, we got two more layers now, so we don't, we, we.
We're better covered.
Yeah, we only need to learn that once.
Okay.
Mr. Stevenson?
Thank you, Ray. To answer your question, there is no guarantee. I don't know if you, if you got that, I don't know what Ray just said. You have no guarantee that.
I was gonna drill down here in a minute, so go ahead.
Huh?
Go ahead. There is no guarantee.
There is no guarantee. I mean, we can certainly call and, and expect them to show up, but it really, a lot of it, a lot of it deals with where the damage is. To answer your question about Irma, we didn't have all that much damage. We decided to do it in-house, and that's what, what our crews did for two weeks. So we did a really good job of doing it, but there is no guarantee to get these debris remain, debris removal companies in town. So I wish there was, but there is not. Just to be.
Great idea.
Totally honest with you. We do have, we do have multiple agencies that we can go to, and certainly, somebody will help us and respond. We said that, after Irma, we were gonna do it ourselves. They wanted to come in, and, but we sent them other places because we knew we can do it ourselves.
So there's no, they're not contractually obligated to come here. They could go to Sarasota or Clearwater.
That's correct. Yeah, they, they, they could do that, but with the.
But this does, it sets the parameters for them to come here, right? Should we ask them to come here, and they have the crews and, you know, you gotta, you gotta understand, these organizations are huge. They have more equipment than you can, you can imagine.
Yeah, but, okay.
So they're, they're not, they're not limited to just one municipality, so.
Other council member, other questions? Councilmember Abel?
I have a question. So if we do the debris removal in-house, and it's collected, we still need a monitoring company such as this one to, to calculate how much is collected so we can get reimbursed by FEMA. Is that correct?
No, no.
Not if we do it in-house.
Um, we learned that lesson in 2004. But if we do it in-house, this sounds crazy, but it's actually, if it's small enough, it's actually better, because we have a lot of own people in the finance department. Last time, we do really good on reimbursement. You know, when you're counting your own money, you seem to know exactly how much you have. I do, anyway. But, you know, if it's small enough of a storm. But when it gets bigger, then it's a little more tedious to do. But when we did 2004, we spent, the city spent $995,000, we got $990,000 back. That's pretty much unheard of, because we had the right monitoring company. So it's just, you, you have to pay attention.
You gotta know the FEMA forms, that's.
The FEMA forms, and, like I say, the, the rate tables now, nobody's gonna go and charge triple and get reimbursed. So nobody's gonna spend it, nobody's gonna, so it's a better position.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, hopefully, we don't need them.
Yeah.
Other questions? There are no other questions, is there a motion?
Move to approve the resolution for the agreement on Landfall Strategies.
Second.
Motion and a second by Councilmember Abel. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No nays. Resolution's approved. Thank you, Mr. LeBlanc. Next item on the agenda is a resolution approving the fiscal year 2021 school grant funding award. School Support Committee Member Kingsley Kelly will explain. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Kingsley Kelly Paratino, Vice Chair. Jen Wilson, her apologies. She had a scheduled event this evening. We would first like to thank you again for your generosity and support with funding our schools. And I, if I understand correctly, the format is a little bit different. We're gonna talk just about the numbers, and then if you have questions, we'll go from there. We met on April 26 for the spring grant cycle. We began with a budget of $8,396.48. We received a total of 14 grant submissions. We are requesting funding for 11 of the grants totaling $7,760.63. That leaves us with a remaining balance of $635.85. And it was suggested that at our May 24 meeting, to have a discussion about a possible contribution of that balance for terrorist reads. We're still waiting on a date for that.
Thank you. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, councilmember, questions? Any questions about any of the projects? I think this would be the appropriate time. No questions? Seeing none. Very good. Well, thank you so much, Ms. Kelly.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Well, I, I move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion?
I have one.
Councilmember Abel?
I was reading over all these grants, and they seem so exciting. So I'm, I'm really happy that, that they're going through and that people submitted these. So, thank you.
We pushed for innovation and creativity. The first cycle, people were really unsure about kind of what school was gonna look like in the immediate future. So we were really excited.
Thank you.
I have to echo that. It's incredible to the, with what some of the teachers have just grabbed things out of the air, to come up with ideas, to, to augment the, the learning experience, both in, in-house and, and remote. It's incredible to watch these guys work at this. They just, you know, it's great. It's just, it's just fun to watch them put it all together. They do a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Other councilmember comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No nays. The grants are awarded. Thank you so much, again.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a resolution adopting SP 20-05, the preliminary plat for the River Park Property Sale located at 70327310 and 7746 Temple Terrace Highway. Planner Celeste Lau will explain. Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay. Evening, Mayor and City Council Members. The item I am presenting tonight is SP 20-05, which is a preliminary plat for a subject property with the addresses of 70327310 and 7746 Temple Terrace Highway. The primary purpose of this plat is to allow Florida College to replat their property and carve out a portion for the River Park subdivision. As stated before, this, this property includes three separate properties with the addresses of 70327310 and 7746 Temple Terrace Highway. The existing uses for the property is the Florida College Academy and Terrace Hill Golf Course. The subject property, the subject property size is approximately 81.3 acres. So from those three properties, the applicant is proposing four new lots or four new properties, with Lot 1 being 35.42 acres. Lot 1 is also going to be where the proposed River Park subdivision is. Lot 2 is 3.2, 3.26 acres. Lot 3 is 2.78 acres. And those are the two properties that are proposed for future commercial areas that are located south of the River Park property. Lot 4 is 39.85 acres and is where the Florida College Academy is located. So this slide shows the existing lot configurations there, with blue being the 7032 Temple Terrace Highway address, purple the 7310 Temple Terrace Highway, and yellow 7746 Temple Terrace Highway. And here's the proposed plat with Lot 1 shown in the blue. Again, that's gonna be the proposed River Park subdivision that you heard at last council meeting. Lot 2 is shown in the yellow, Lot 3 in the purple. Those are proposed to be future commercial areas, and Lot 4 in the green, where the Florida College Academy is. The Development Review Committee has reviewed and does not have any outstanding objections to the proposed plat. City staff recommends that council approve the resolution for SP 20-05. That concludes staff presentation. Both staff and the applicant are here for any questions you may have.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Lau. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Good evening, sir.
Yeah, good evening, Council. Jeremy Couch, Tampa Civil, Lutz, Florida. It, it's pretty much exactly what Celeste said. We have to create a legal lot of records so that we can start to create a deed and title commitment, and this is the proper way to subdivide land. So there's no improvements provided with this. Staff is, and your consultants have reviewed our actual plat document. So with your approval, we'll bring a Mylar in, record it at the court, and actually legally create this lot. And then we'll be back in your next hearings to talk about final site plan and, and anything else as we proceed. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, councilmember, questions for staff or the applicant? I do have one quick question, Ms. Lau. The parcel of property that, where the Florida Academy is located now, that's included only because we're slicing off a little bit of that? Is that why that's included in here?
Correct, yeah.
I thought so. I wasn't sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Other questions for staff? Okay, seeing, seeing none. Is there a motion to adopt SP 20-05?
I move to approve adoption of SP 20-05, preliminary plat for the River Park Property Sale located at 703270, 7310 and 7746 Temple Terrace Highway.
Good. Motion is second by Councilmember Chambers. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No nays. Resolution is approved. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a resolution approving adjustments to the fiscal year 2021 budget. Our Finance Director Lynn Boswell will explain. Welcome, Mrs. Boswell.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. During fiscal year 2020, there were a number of purchases and projects that were not completed or received by the close of the fiscal year on September 30, 2020. Projects and services that were not completed by then but were intended to be spent out of fiscal year 2020 funds now should be attributed to the fiscal year budget 2021. Additional grants and payments have been received that are significant enough that it changes the fund appropriation. The attached listings, Exhibit 1, demonstrate what was intended for fiscal year 2020 and was not received or finished by September 30, 2020, and funds received or dispersed that were not originally budgeted. The recommendation is that City Council approve a resolution for adjustments to the fiscal year 21 budget, appropriating and allocating funds for projects that were not completed in fiscal year 2020 and for unplanned revenue and expenses in fiscal year 21. I stand for questions.
Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, council member, questions for Finance Director? I, I have kind of a general question, and I should have probably asked this before, but when we encumber these funds to, for a project, does that money that was in the 2020 budget, does that somehow get, like, locked up so that when the project is done in the next fiscal year, we still have the 2020 money?
No, we do not. All encumbrances end at 9:30, 2020. I've gone over this a couple of times with the, with our auditor, and unless the resolution is written in such a way, for example, if you're approving something and you know it's going to be more than the fiscal year, then I wouldn't have to come back. And many of these, or I would say with the exception of one or two, we did expect these to be completed by the end of the fiscal year. And that's just the timeline. It's a straight cutoff. We could get it and finish it by October 1. I would still have to come to you with, in appropriation.
So, so my question then is, I know at the end of our fiscal year, any leftover money that we had, that we collected, that we have this money, 2020 money, and we that we had, that we collected, that we have this money, 2020 money, and we didn't spend it, that then goes into what we call reserves.
Yes, that is correct.
So then this money that we're approving tonight, you will then go in and take that money out of reserves?
That is correct.
So that's where it's been kind of hibernating this time?
It is correct.
Okay. I understand. Okay. CPA for dummies here. Bear with me, I'm sorry. I want everybody to understand. So, very good. Thank you, Ms. Lau. I'm sorry, are there other questions for Ms. Boswell?
I do appreciate, I do appreciate the notes, because that, that helps a lot. You know, it's one thing to see, we had to spend this much money, but telling me why it wasn't spent in the fiscal year, it really makes it easier to say, go for it.
Yeah, the notes were good, yeah.
Yeah.
And that's thanks to Charles, our, the city manager, for just encouraging me to, I would know the reasons, and I really like that he says, okay, go back out and let's just fulfill this a little bit more and flesh that out. And I think that's a really great idea going forward.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Boswell. Thank you for the finance lesson, too. So, is there a motion?
To approve budget, excuse me, move to approve the current fiscal year 2021 budget estimates for incomplete purchase orders. Second.
We have a motion. I think Mr. Chambers beat you to it. Motion is second by councilmember Chambers. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no nays. Resolution is approved. Thank you, Ms. Boswell. Next item is council business. I believe Mr. Sisler has board reports. Well, that's, council business, I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself. Council business, any carryover council business from previous meetings? I just have one item. The topic that councilmember Abel brought up about asking somebody to come and present to us about the pure proposal, the reuse of, well, wastewater, I guess. We did reach out to Tampa. I do not know if Mr. Tench has heard back yet or not, but we are working on that, just to give you a status.
Thank you for the follow-up on that.
Any other carryover council business from previous meetings? Okay? I'm sorry. Now, new business or board reports, and I know Mr. Sisler has.
Just, just an announcement to make sure everybody's here next meeting. We are finally going to get the new CEO for Heart to come out and speak with us. She's going to come introduce herself, introduce herself to us and just give her rendition of the state of heart at this point. So, look forward to hearing her speak. It's been delayed a couple of times, but we, she'll be here next meeting. I just want to make sure everybody's aware of that. That's all I had.
Very good. Thank you. Other new business or board reports? I have a couple of, I'll start out with the easy one, and I'm glad you mentioned everybody be here next week. If council members, I know you routinely do this, but if you haven't yet, I know you and I coordinate our vacation so that we're not both out of town at the same time. If you could, please share any summer vacation out-of-town plans with the city manager or genie, I guess it'd probably be, so that we can kind of know, you know, who's off when, so we don't get caught in a lurch. And now's not the time, you don't want to announce to the public when you're not going to be in town. But, but the vice mayor and I have coordinated our leave time so that we're, somebody's here, so. Another item that I have is the governor's order that came out yesterday. The city manager, the city attorney, and I have had several discussions about this. I don't know if you guys have read it. I've read it 100 times, probably, I think we all have. I will give you the status as we understand it as it is right now. And I'm happy to answer any questions, but I don't know if I'll have the answers, but I'll, I'll tell you what I know, the three of us can tell you. As we understand things right now, if you read the governor's order, it's pretty simple, that the local mandates, restrictions, ordinances, emergency orders that have been put in place by cities and counties anywhere in the state pursuant to either the state of emergency at the state level, or a county level, or a city-level state of emergency, those have all been nullified, suspended, overturned, whatever you want to say. So, in Hillsborough County and Tampa, I don't want to speak for Tampa, I won't do that. In Hillsborough County, because that's the ordinance that we've been subject to, as it stands right now, right, that ordinance has been quashed. So there is no mask ordinance in place. Now, I don't know what the county may or may not do. They may do nothing, they may try to enact another. There seems to be some wiggle room in the final parts of the order that enable the counties to enact another ordinance that's not tied to a declaration of emergency. There's a little, you can read the paragraph a couple of different ways, so I'm not sure. The city attorney reading it saying, well, it looks like maybe they could, I don't know. We don't know for sure. And it would be speculative to try to predict what they may or may not do anyway, so I don't know. In terms of Temple Terrace, it would seem from the governor's order that we have no legal authority to compel people to wear masks within our city facility pursuant to the governor's order. Our intent, of course, this is subject to the council's override, if this isn't the direction you want to go, but our intent, the city manager, the city attorney and I have conferred, our intent as of right now is to post our buildings with requests for people to wear masks when they come inside, but it's our understanding from the governor's order that we cannot compel them to do so because we're a government building. It's not like Publix, we can't, they have a right to come in a government building. So, as it stands right now, we can't order anybody to wear masks in our library, rec center, and city hall. We do have plans to open city hall. I'll let Mr. Stevenson elaborate on that during his report. There are plans to open this building up to the public. And as I said, masks will be requested and advised, but not mandatory. So, are there questions that you have for the city attorney or me or city manager on that? I just wanted to get that out there, so.
So individual businesses can?
Yes.
Do as they choose?
Yes, they can. And in fact, I read today in the paper, I don't, you know, I don't want to repeat what I just read in the paper, but according to the newspaper today, Publix plans to continue their mask policy for, at least for now. So private businesses can govern, yes. If, if somebody says, I want somebody, you were to wear a mask in my business, they have that right.
Okay, that's good to know.
And you can't be penalized for failing to wear a mask, but you can be asked to leave, and you have to leave. So, good, good question, good point.
I have a question. I think that would probably be for, for you. So I was looking over the county's ordinance, and I wasn't sure, but was that an emergency ordinance? Because it seems like the governor's stuff cancels all emergency ordinances, but I was wondering if that was in the same category?
The governor's order does suspend all emergency ordinances. I am assuming that the county implemented that as an emergency ordinance due to COVID, but if they want to continue with such an ordinance, they can, they can adopt one as we would a normal ordinance, having the two public hearings and adopt it the normal way, not as an emergency measure.
Understood. Thank you.
And I'm told that the DOCC is going to discuss this at their meeting tomorrow, so for those of you interested. What time, did you say that, a time certain on that?
Mr. Mayor, I'll have to double check, but.
That's all right.
I believe I read 10:45 time certain.
Okay.
But I can send that email out first thing in the morning to all of you, so that if you want to, you want to listen, and you can watch on TV.
Okay.
I have a question about that.
Oh, I'm sorry, vice mayor.
If the county does this, if they bring it back, then does that lay over the top of us, like most things do?
Well, I, that's a very good question. Yes, unless we do something, it would. There's a lot of speculation here, and I don't want to, if it's okay, I don't want to avoid your question, but I also don't want to go too deep into speculation. Yes, it would, but it differs from an emergency ordinance in that Chapter 252, which delineates emergency powers under an, under a declared state of emergency, don't apply. That chapter would not apply. So, now, you could potentially have a conflict between a municipal ordinance and a county ordinance if we had a municipal ordinance, but we don't. So, my suggestion is that we hold that thought and see, see what the county is going to do, because we could get mired in a lot of speculative, I don't know. But the short answer is, we are subject to county ordinances, unless there's a conflict with a city ordinance that we have, but we don't have anything that addresses masks. But, so the short answer is, would it apply? Yes, it would. But we couldn't, for a variety of reasons, we couldn't exempt it ourselves from the mask ordinance.
Correct.
Period. Okay. Is that clear as mud to everybody? I'm sorry. Okay, all right.
Clear as talking through a mask.
Clear as talking through a mask, okay. And I have one final item, and I'd like the council to think about this. I'd like, I'd like you to, I'd like your support on this. For some time, I've thought about initiating a bicycle pedestrian mayor's advisory group for Temple Terrace. Now, I know the county has this, and we have a representative on the county one, but I would like to institute a mayor's one for Temple Terrace. I'd like to get our local cycling community involved and get their ideas and recommendations on things that we might be able to do to support the larger county initiatives, or on our local streets, you know, places that, and things like, things of that nature. It occurs to me, I mean, I can create this mayor's advisory thing, but it's, and that's okay, but it would be better to have this whole council thing. I don't want, really want to do something that's just a me. I mean, then I got to come and tell you what they told me, and, and then it dies with me, too, right? And so if you guys are interested in this idea, I would propose that we discuss creating another committee, like the River Watch, or, you know, another school support committee, another volunteer citizens board, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. I don't know that they would be enough business for them to meet once a month, maybe once every other month, once every quarter, I don't know yet. This would be some additional burden on the clerk's office, because somebody would have to take minutes and all that. Would be some additional burden on us, because we have to get reports from another committee. But if there's interest in this, I will get with the city clerk, city manager, and kind of hammer out some details and bring it back as an agenda item on a future meeting. But I don't know if you're interested or not. I, I would really prefer to do it that way, as opposed to something that I just do, and then it dies when I leave, you know, it, you know.
I fully support that. I, I think, do you want to broaden it to mean, like we have this proposal out here about this trail, this bike trail, or would that fit under that?
It could. It could, sure.
I like the idea. Are we going to do, as we've done in other cases, people apply to serve for a certain number of years, and they should have some bicycle, they should be able to ride a bike?
Yeah, my idea is not to reinvent the wheel. It would mirror kind of what we do with the other committees.
I like it. I'll support it.
I would like to see an idea of what it's going to look like, how it's going to operate, what other groups it's going to interact with. I mean, if they never speak to the county and so forth, then it's, then everybody's spinning their wheels, more or less. So I would like to see more information on it before I'd make a decision, but in principle, it sounds, it sounds workable.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Chambers?
Yes, same here. I support that. I think it's a great idea. I'd like to see bicycling, of course, but walking and running. We have running clubs in the city, so.
Sure.
I support that.
Yes, I agree, and, you know, sidewalk projects, right.
I'd like to see us move forward with that, too. I like the idea.
Okay. And I share your sentiment, Mr. Sisler, because I don't have all the details yet either, and we need to talk, there's a lot of discussion here to talk about. Okay. Not a project, I'll get with you and we'll, right, you know, I got it. I'm not putting this one, you got a lot on your plate already, so.
We're good.
Okay. Other new business, board reports. Seeing none. Mr. Stevenson, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You just had mentioned about us opening city hall. I think last week I sent the council, after copying my director's, some directive on what we're going to do with city hall. We are prepared, and we have been making provisions for some time now to not only address the COVID issue and isolate portions of our downstairs in our building here in city hall, but also to address security issues that previous councils had looked at me and said, you need to look at security after the incident we had out front. So, we have done that, we've done a lot of work. There is still a little bit of work to do, but we have taken some steps to try to get back into providing services in person to the community. That being said, it's going to be a little bit different, and aside from the mask and what we decide to do with the mask here in the, in the near future, one of the things that we will do is try to control access to the building. People will have access to the building. They will have access to, we have placed a monitor out front that has all the listings and phone directory, job postings, public hearings, legal notices, so on and so forth, so that we can get people back into the building. One of the things that has always bothered me is the fact that when we went through this COVID, we ended up taking the smoking shed out there and trying to make that a place to drop off documents, someplace that we can post our notices. Now we have created a somewhat of a little small lobby out front on the parking lot side where people can come in out of the rain if they need to, before we hadn't had that ability. We do have, and we've made provisions to put phones down there, and interactive mechanisms for there to reach out to staff in order to get the personal attention that we've given to in the past. What we are trying to do, though, however, is to limit people just roaming our hallways, and we've had that happen quite a bit. So, we are making provisions to open up city hall. If you want to come in and see the city manager, my door is still open, but you need to ask permission to come in and see the city manager, so that we can control access to the building. Okay? So, for some masks, we'll get all that worked out here later on. We certainly going to continue to disinfect. We've got programs that disinfect our facilities and our vehicles. We've got all that equipment purchased. We're going to continue doing that regardless of how the mask ordinance goes, but we will repost the front of the building. This is scheduled to happen May 10th, which is next Monday. So, we're prepared to do that, and I know that it's going to work out just fine, so. Any questions? I'd be happy to answer any questions. This is a work in progress, just like we had to modify things on a daily, weekly basis for COVID, but we're going to get it all worked out.
I do have one question, Mr. Stevenson. So, on council meeting nights, do you intend to keep the 56th Street side as the primary entrance? Or is it going to go back to being?
We're going to keep, this is the primary entrance. That allows us, again, we've put some barriers out here between the clerk's office and council lobby, right? And certainly, we're going to continue to ask people to take their temperatures and ask people to, I mean, we've still got sanitation stations out there, but obviously, we'll ask them to come through the magnetometer so that we have some security here as well when we conduct, conduct these meetings.
So this will be the council meeting entrance?
Yes, sir.
From now on?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Got other questions? Very good. Anything else, Mr. Stevenson?
No, that's all I have for you. I just wanted to make sure that you guys understand what we're doing here, so. I think it's a good plan. We've got a, we've got a good, got a good set of directors working on all this, and customer service is, is going to be accessible again. It's amazing to me how many people love to come to city hall to pay their water bill. But we have a contingent of people that love to come to city hall, so. All that's now being brought back into our building. We'll restore the smoking shed to its original condition, certainly, and when people walk up to, when people walk up to the doors on 56th Street, they will be able to get in the building.
Can you give us an update on the 4th of July planning, or is it?
We're moving forward, 4th of July. Carl's here, you want to, you want to, Carl, you want to give us an update real quick? I know Carl and I I know Carl and I have spoken here a couple of times since we said go full force, and
Good evening.
He's been addressing him as we need to.
Yes, we are going full forward with Fourth of July planning. We are currently accepting parade applications. We have parade applications already in hand for floats that have already signed up. We have contract documents under review right now with our fireworks vendor. I expect those to be executed here in the very near future to get them locked in. We have purchase orders in place for entertainers for pre-fireworks activities on the Fourth of, on the fairway prior to the fireworks. We are going full forward. We're, we're planning to have a tremendous Fourth of July parade, games, activities on the fairway, fireworks, the whole kit and caboodle.
It'll be on the third.
The third, yes. It will be on Saturday, the third of July.
You show up on the fourth, you're going to be alone.
You're going to be the only one out there.
Everybody listening, it's going to be on the third.
Saturday, or Saturday, the third, yes, sir.
Questions for Director Langford while he's up?
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you so much, Carl. And the pool deck's looking great, too, by the way.
Yes.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions? Oh, we got two hands up. I think she beat you to it, though. Council member Abel.
Well, Mr. Stevenson, can you speak to the back by popular demand recycling program, which I know you've told us all about, but I'm sure the public would would love to hear a little bit about that.
Thank you. May 10th also starts our recycling curb, recycling pickup at the curb. Again, with encouraging everybody to put glass. We still don't have a mechanism to get rid of glass for recycle purposes without it being very expensive and very tedious for us to do that. We will be picking up two bins, one with paper and cardboard, and another bin with plastic and metal at the curb starting May 10th. On regular schedules, we're just resuming the schedules that were were previously in in place. Crews are ready. We've, since we started thinking about doing this, we've ordered some new bins. We've had about 100 bins that people have asked for and requested. So we've got the, we've got a new video that is up on our TV, TV station. If the, public, general public wants to look at that, it's up there. If they've got any other comments or questions, they can certainly call Public Works. Everybody is on the same page. So we're looking forward to reinstating that recycling program.
Thank you.
Thank you for mentioning that.
Good question, council member. Thank you. Vice mayor?
Yep, it was mentioned that there was going to be a ribbon cutting at Paragon Properties. Had, nothing else has happened?
I don't know anything about ribbon cutting.
At the last CRA's meeting, they said, you know, just sort of pencil in the date, so you don't know anything about that.
No, we don't have, well, I I know that Greg had mentioned
Looking really nice.
going to do that, but we don't, we don't have any kind of date as of yet.
And it is, it's coming along very nicely. I like all the details they're putting on the 56th Street side. That was very important to me. Also, I want to thank you for cleaning the brick wall. Looks nice. I know you weren't out there with your spray hose yourself, but but you called, whoever you called to do that, that was much appreciated. It looks very nice. Thank you.
Other questions for city manager? Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. City attorneys report.
No news is good news. I have nothing to report.
Welcome back from vacation. Council members, any other business to come before the council? Any other business? Seeing none, we're adjourned. Good night, everybody.